Okay, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so before we actually start our actual meeting, we're gonna have a public hearing. If there's anybody that needs to discuss the safety plan, the 2023-24 Hudson Falls District-wide safety plan. Mr. Ward?
Yeah, so as is required by regulation, you have to have a public hearing. And prior to the public hearing, the plan has to be posted for thirty days prior to the public hearing. Those have been satisfied. The board members around the table had it in their board docs, and we also had it posted on our website. We received zero comments publicly through email or any other means. So, and certainly there's, I don't know, are you here to discuss the district-wide safety plan thing? So, there's nobody present in the room right now. So, if the board wants to discuss it, certainly can, but I would do a motion and a second to approve, and then do the discussion before the vote. If anybody wants to talk about specific building safety plans before they're approved, those cannot be talked about in public session. Those would have to be talked about in executive session due to the sensitive nature of those plans. So, seeing nobody, certainly up to you, you can wait a little while, but you could close the hearing, and we can move on, or we can give it a minute or two to see if somebody walks in.
What do you guys think? If we can close it and move on? Okay. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing on the district-wide safety plan, and we'll move into our board meeting. So, just the routine items we have to approve this evening. Minutes of the regular meeting of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Accept an order filed, the minutes of committee on special education for seven eighteen and seven twenty of two thousand twenty-three. And accept an order filed of the minutes of the committee on preschool special education for seven fourteen, seven nineteen, and seven twenty-five. Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Mike, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. We also need a motion to approve the minutes of the reorganizational meeting of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion? Someone by Crystal, or by Heidi, seconded by Mike, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. So regarding the district-wide, approve it tonight, Dan?
Yep.
Okay. So regarding the district-wide safety plan for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four district-wide safety plan. Do we have a motion? So moved by Amanda, seconded by? Crystal, all in favor? Opposed? That carries.
That's been posted on the website, are we gonna leave that on the website?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we're required to do so. What'll happen is it'll change from draft to approved.
Okay. Let me get back to this here. So regarding the emergency response plans. And this is for the high school emergency response plan, the middle school emergency response plan, the intermediate school emergency response plan, the primary school kindergarten center response plans, emergency response plans. So be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the emergency response plans for the high school, the middle school, the intermediate school, primary school, and the kindergarten center for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do we have a motion? So moved by Vince, seconded by? Mike, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. And the last action tonight is the required training professional development. Be it resolved, anybody have any questions regarding that?
I could speak to it quickly.
Sure.
Yep, so each summer, we have a number of individuals who require training before their actual start date. Most people's start date, who are higher of summer official, full-time start is September one. With the number of required trainings these days, we have to bring folks in, and we need them to come, and people need to be compensated for their time. So basically, this empowers me through board action to do so. To be perfectly honest, there has been groups that we have compensated in the past, or individuals we compensated in the past without this. I'm just trying to clean it up procedurally by having the board take action. So if this resolution looks good to the board tonight, I'd ask you to pass it, and that'll be for this summer, and then it's gonna be on our July reorganizational every year going forward. That way, we're just covered. And some of those trainings are like de-escalation training, DASA training, those types of trainings that we need to have everybody up to speed on for opening day.
Anybody have any questions for Dan?
So were people not being reimbursed before this, or it's just that the board is preapproving it, so we don't have to go back and prove it?
Specific groups were being reimbursed, and I, in my own auditing of payroll, I asked what authorization we had. So this provides the authorization when I sign that payroll, because I do look at the payroll every two weeks, person by person, to see who we're paying and how much. It takes quite a bit of time. And this is one of the ones where, eh, we don't really have something, but we have done it. And I know the people are here, they'll be right in this room, there'll be thirty aides and assistants in here. We also have some special education teachers that need to have some of those same de-escalation training, and we can't take them out of the classroom once school starts, because we've gotta have them in the classroom. So it just makes sense. It really codifies what we're doing and authorizes me in writing from the board to do so.
Any other questions? Good. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District empowers the superintendent to employ individuals on a per diem or hourly basis prior to their effective full-time start date for the purpose of participating in approved or required trainings and professional development. Per diem and hourly payments will be calculated per their appropriate labor contracts. Do we have a motion? So moved by Amanda, seconded by? Crystal, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. That moves us to public comments. Nothing?
I think you're attending tonight representing the Hudson Falls Administrative Association. Awesome, thank you for being here.
Perfect. Okay, that moves us to committees. Right to personnel. Mr. Kenee.
Okay, it's pretty routine in the time of the year, there's a couple of others. So Brian Pinchot is retiring. And junior teacher hires Catherine Johnson at the elementary counseling. And Jennifer Gibbs, East Breeze, DLA. And there's still a couple opening.
Yep, yeah, so we're in pretty good shape as we sit today as far as instructional staff. We are, we're still looking for a school psychologist for our intermediate school. We are still looking for a social worker for our primary school, and we are in the recruitment process for an alternative learning environment teacher for middle-high school students. But that recruitment is hitting the interview process. And we are looking for approximately five additional teaching assistants. But those are all in, those are all in the recruiting interview processes right now. So we're getting close. Those are certainly important positions. They are positions that mean we can't open school, so we're working through it.
Dan, did we?
So, but they did some interviewing.
They did some interviewing.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, there's still some, so I was talking on the instructional, there's still some non-instructional as well, correct? Yeah, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? All right, so by consent, that's approved. And that brings us to audit. Mrs. Gormond.
I think I have to can audit to Mr. Ward and Mr. Paul, because we don't have our regular reports yet first month. It will be non-for next month, but this is what I need to get done.
Thank you.
You wanna start with why we don't have treasurer's report and normal reports? You're the man.
You will see that the agenda's a little bit different than what you see with a regular audit meeting. Generally, we will have treasurer's reports, we will have extracurricular account balances with the details. The reason we do not have those right now is they're being audited by our new firm that we have in. So before we present those to the board, we have them review those and then move forward. So in September, we will have all of those, you'll see a couple months of them coming through. So that's the reason you're not seeing that on there for tonight. The audit committee, we did have a meeting last Wednesday morning, because we did wanna do a couple cleanup on a few different things. We had our internal audit completed. Each year, we have one of these, we have an external audit, we have an internal audit. Basically, the external audit focuses on a grander picture throughout the district. The internal audit will focus on one individual area in audit. It's generally someplace where cash changes hands, because that's your highest risk of fraud taking place. So our internal audit was done by Alan Prindle, who we've had for several years. He owns A200 Audit Services, he's also a former state controller auditor, retired. So he came in and completed his audit of our extra classroom funds. So that is one big area where cash changes hands. So basically, he went through all the procedures, all of the paperwork to make sure that we have the right sign-offs and that the proper controls are in place. So he did two years, he did two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. That may seem odd, it is. Because when the state controller comes in and audits us, we do not need an internal audit that year, because that is usually a six-month audit. So we did not have one done in eighteen nineteen. The problem came up that the state controller came in in eighteen nineteen, but they audited seventeen eighteen. So we had to go back and redo one. And that's why he did it for two different years, and he did it in the same area. So within the extra classroom funds, if you read through this, he talks about all the procedures that are in place. He also talks about what he's looking for throughout any risk, any risk areas. And then on page eleven, he gives recommendations. So we have two recommendations. And the first one is, he was, you'll see in, I think it's page nine, he does talk about the records. We have an extra classroom auditor that's appointed each year. He said that the records are meticulous, which is great for us to have. The one thing is, is within the clubs, he's not seeing profit and loss statements for any activities that are being done. We see, we basically see those throughout the whole scope of the extracurricular accounts, but we do not see them, he did not see them individually. So one of the things we're gonna do, we meet with all of the advisors for the extra classrooms on the first day, which would be September fourth, Dan?
I think it's the seventh and eighth this year.
First, it's the first or second day, like a superintendent's conference day. And our treasurer for the extracurriculars will meet with them. I'm also gonna be present, and we're gonna put this in place to make sure that anytime there's an activity that a profit and loss statement is being done. It's not only for the club, but that's kind of the purpose of these clubs, too, is to kind of teach the kids, you know, this is how you have to do this, when you're collecting money, you have to show basically a profit and loss. That's the basic essence of business. So we, that will be put in on opening day, and we also will go back and check them periodically throughout the year to make sure that they are being done.
So this is getting kind of, this is making more work for the advisor to these clubs? Or students that are in these clubs?
Both.
Yep.
Yep, yep, so the advisor will, in a, a profit and loss statement should take you about five minutes to do with an activity. You know, it's basically, you're showing your expenses, and you're showing your revenues, and the difference between the two. And knowing the extracurricular treasurer, she probably will have a form for everybody that'll be nice and easy to use. So that's one of the things we'll talk about before that meeting, but it's just kind of showing them what the purpose of the activities are and things like that, too. So it kind of ties into an educational piece within the group, so. Yeah, but it's not, it's nothing.
It's not gonna like chase away people from?
No, no, it shouldn't.
It's, so I'll go a step further. It actually, the additional paperwork is protective of those people, because you're showing, you're showing the money in, money out. Right, so it actually, when they go and speak about it, I'm hoping that comes up, it protects those advisors later on, that everything's in writing, and the kids signed off, and we did this together with the kids. It isn't, you know, an adult doing it in isolation. Because it's money by the kids for the kids, is kind of what the overall arching statement of this is. And he mentions the safeguarding, accounting, and auditing of extra classroom activity funds. It's a binder that's put out by New York State Education Department, and profit and loss is one of the things that's normal operating procedure. So once we have it in there, it's better for folks. Is it possible that some people are gonna be saying it's one more thing to do? It's absolutely possible that that will, that will run across people's minds.
How many operations are there?
Yeah, so right now, based on me going through with Mrs. Hogan, there is not, and has not been, limits set up for that. So that's one of the discussions that she and I had about it. She spent a long time talking with Alan, going through the findings, and answering questions for her as a new person. So I gave her some samples of what has occurred in other places that I've worked in, other places that I've provided samples to her. So she's working on some additional systems to make it operate a little bit more smoothly, for sure.
And then the last item is, in doing the audit from eighteen nineteen, there was, we have everything, all of our records are electronic and also in paper copies. So when we moved over here at some point in time, there's a box missing from eighteen nineteen. So we haven't found it yet, but we find it, we're gonna provide it. It's, we currently have like four or five Conexes of records that got moved all over. But he just said, basically, we wanna make sure that we try to retain those. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna create a checklist, too, of documentation, because that comes from a different part of the district over to us to be stored. So we're gonna create a checklist to make sure that we have all those each year moving forward with the documentation, so. But he was still able to complete the audit, because we have everything electronically anyway, so. But he just noted that. So overall, it was a good audit. You know, he gives us some recommendations that'll help us move forward in the future with this. He's excellent at what he does. So basically, tonight, what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a, we're gonna put a motion out there, and basically, what you're saying is you're just not approving the audit, you're saying that you are in receipt of the audit. Okay, that it was shared with the board, so.
Other items on there, or do you want me to do some?
There's the cooperative bid one.
No, I'll go around the next one. The next one is the cooperative bid resolution. What this is, is there's a New York and Island cooperative bid program for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This is a group that is putting together many schools and tying them in with vendors, a lot of the big vendors that we buy from throughout the district. And it's using, it's the same concept as the BOSI's bits that we've become part of for, you know, milk and different things like that. But now they're parlaying that into some, really getting some solid purchasing power for supplies. And what it allows you to do is, it allows, it's a system that would be inputted directly from the teacher when, once they get their supply amounts, and we set all that up so that, in the system, it gives them a limit. And they can go in, and they can go to the vendor and get the lowest possible price on many of the supplies that they're getting. Ironically, athletics doesn't participate, athletic supplies doesn't participate in this, but all your basically classroom supplies. And what it does is it harnesses the purchasing power of basically like a hundred school districts who order a lot of the same things to drive prices down, and it makes the vendors really compete against each other for this business. So when you have that much, when you have that much purchasing power, it will drive the price down even more than if we go out and bid things between companies. So it should provide us with a nice cost savings when it comes to supplies. And the other piece of this that it does for us is, currently, we, an order will come in from a staff member to basically the secretary of the building. They will have to key in everything on that order and one of our purchase orders, then it goes through the approval process. This can actually take out that first step. So it'll actually be inputted and then go to the approver. So it will also save us its labor hours in doing purchase orders. And, you know, in a district this size, doing a thousand purchase orders in July is nothing. So you can imagine that that's quite a bit of time typing those all in, getting those all ready to go and everything like that, so. It's, what we're doing for the twenty-three, twenty-four year is, we've obviously done most of our purchasing now, but it's a perfect time for, as we do continue to purchase things throughout the year, it's a nice trial period for us, because it's not the big, huge influx. So all of us will be able to, from the approvers, the individuals inputting it, right up to where the purchase order goes out, it'll give us a chance to kind of go through the system. We still will be able to get the pricing that's been done with all the districts. So there's another savings there, but moving forward, it really should expedite our purchasing process. And I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a valuable thing moving forward, so. Any questions?
So I sort of asked, but I, when you pay the upfront cost of the program, does that cover your, including your big purchase, or is that a calendar year, or is it a fiscal year?
In twenty, in, what year are we in, twenty-three, twenty-four, where most of the purchasing has been done already? I'm guessing, we'll recoup some of it, I'm guessing we may not recoup all of it. But when we get that ready and go into twenty-four, twenty-five, where we purchase millions, that's where we'll see, we'll more than recoup that. I'm confident, I can't guarantee it, we're gonna look at it and actually do an analysis of it, but I feel pretty confident that we're gonna more than recoup that.
But you do pay the whole price of the program?
Yes.
Even though you're not getting your big savings?
Correct, this year, in twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah.
Correct, and I did try to get a discount, I remember the question. I did, I did, I did try to get a discounted price for the partial participation by our school this year. They go, just based on student enrollment into this for the entire year, so. I did not, I did ask, I was denied, but I did ask. Yep, naming of school facilities, you also have a resolution on there. We had it on in June, and we tabled it. Had to do with a request and an application that was received by the Buildings and Grounds Committee to dedicate the auditorium to Joyce Irwin. And you can see that we do have a resolution to do so. I had shared a while back a photo of a plaque that's a template that I'd like to use if the board approves that resolution tonight, so that we kind of have uniformity in what we're doing here in the building, and there's a nice example of what we wanna do down by the gymnasium, so. I support it, you guys know Joyce probably better than I do, you've been here longer, many of you have been here longer than me. I've had quite a bit of contact with her through Wall of Distinction, and she was a music teacher for my wife and her sisters when they went through school, so. You want me to keep going? Tax rates, we won't, we won't be able to set tax rates tonight, that means that we're gonna have to have a special meeting. We did talk about that at audit, we're waiting on one specific town.
We're waiting on the rules. Which I just got some of them in, well, fifteen minutes before the meeting, but it's obviously, but we're just waiting to get.
Right, it's good.
We're just waiting to get the rules. We've got some preliminary figures, but when it comes to setting the tax rates, especially since it affects different towns, and the equalization rates have changed in many of them this year. We need to, we need to see the rules to make sure that we have that number one hundred percent accurate, so. We probably will need to do a special meeting, it'll take just, it'll take just a few minutes to approve the tax warrant. And we're gonna have to get in touch with you to let you know when that might be. Just so that we can, that's something I, we gotta make sure that we have all that documentation before we roll forward with it.
So once we have the information, you'll hear from Kelly, we'll set something up, we just need to have a quorum. It'll be a public meeting, we'll post it on the website and all of that, and all of that required, those required postings and information for folks, but it'll be just that, should be just that one item. And there isn't a ton of discussion, other than if there's questions by the board, because it's all, it's mathematics, right? It's an equation based on numbers, and they do the calculations, and it comes up with a number. It isn't a time to debate that we don't like that the tax rate is X in this town and not in that town. Certainly, questions about Y might be appropriate, but it's all done through mathematics. Certainly, questions about why might be appropriate, but it's all done through mathematics.
And the last item that we had on the agenda was, we received a donation in t-shirts from a store like George Live Love Laugh with an approximate $300 value. Generally, when we, when we receive a donation, we will put that in front of the Board of Education just to accept the donation, so that was, Kel, that was from, through Lisa Hogan, right? She received a donation for the t-shirts. I want to say it was, it was about 20 t-shirts, 15 or 20 t-shirts, and we put approximate value of $300 on it, so we'll be looking for a resolution on that. And that concludes audit.
Okay. So we have four things to approve, potentially approve. The first, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District is in receipt of the internal audit report. Do we have a motion to approve? So Crystal, seconded by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Regarding the cooperative bid program, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the New York Island Cooperative Bid Program for the 2023-24 school year. Do we have a motion? Seconded by Crystal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. In the naming of school facility plaques and memorial applications, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the dedication of the auditorium to Mrs. Joyce Irwin. Do we have a motion? Moved by Crystal, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And lastly, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls School District accepts the t-shirt donation from Live Love Laugh Store in Lake George, approximate value is $300. Do we have a motion?
So.
By Crystal or by Amanda, seconded by, I was going to say, you got a second now. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Okay. So before I turn it over to Mr. Ward, I just want to say congratulations to Mrs. Megan Borland for being on the board. I know July started your, your tenure here, but congratulations and we're looking forward to having you on the board. And also, Mr. Dr. Steele, congratulations for accepting another term. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Ward, all yours.
Yeah, so I'll be brief. Capital project update. If you, if you came in the wrong entrance, you, and if you didn't, it's worth taking a quick walk through the high school. We are, we are in full-blown construction across all hallways. The seats for the auditorium showed up yesterday morning, so now we have 600 and something cardboard boxes in all the high school hallways. So we're working through it. Kevin and I are making daily site visits and sometimes multiple visits, and Dave McEgan is too, going around and checking in on things. So we're, we're in good shape. It's a, it'll be a race to the finish, but there's, there's a lot of good work going on at all, all the buildings for certain, so we're getting there. No good news to give you on that fire rated glass. We're still looking at mid-September as our received date for that, which means everything will not be done to completion, but if the glass comes in when it's supposed to, that, that's still a pretty nice place to end up. We are, our target is to have everything done as far as construction goes as soon as possible, but certainly early enough so that we can have all of our final cost reports filed with the state of New York prior to December, because that, that affects our funding stream as far as building aid goes. So, and we feel like we're still on track for that and we'll keep letting you know if there's something different that's going to happen, but right now, we feel like we're in a decent spot. Strategic planning. Kevin and I sat with Nicole Eleoto yesterday and went through some documents that she put together. I know I've been giving the board some updates on the, on the weekly reports, so more information to come, but we probably spent about an hour, 45 minutes to an hour with her yesterday. Mike would have been there, but he's, Mike has been away at a conference the last couple of days. The state requires that each school district have somebody committed as their DEI representative, so Mike's been at a two-day conference, that's why he's not here tonight. That didn't get over till 3:00 or so and he said, you want me to rush back for part of the meeting? And I said, not necessary for, for this evening's meeting. School opening. We, we are on track to have our spaces back, I'll knock on wood just a little bit. I always put it out there, certainly would love to have board members come. If you're interested in dressing the faculty and staff on opening day, we should be in our auditorium for that and we do have a large group gathering at 8:30 on the first conference day. So that's the Tuesday after Labor Day. Any other board members that want to come and be a part of it? Every year, I say the same things, you folks, come, say we really support you, we love the work that you do, or whatever the messages you want to say, and then we ask you, you know, if you want to look around for a little bit or hang out for a little bit, have a snack or whatever, then we ask it to kind of go, so we can, we can get on our way with our work. That's, that's what I put out there every single year, but I'd love to have as many people as possible. People love to see you there, they really do. And that already said it, we got to have a special meeting. I don't need to repeat it. You'll hear from Kelly as soon as we have the info, as soon as Kevin has the info. And that'll be held, likely that'll be just right in my office, small meeting, you know, open to the public, but probably take five minutes or less. That's what I have, unless there's questions about anything else maybe that's going on in the world. Good. Turning it back over.
Okay, well, if nobody has any questions, that concludes our meeting. Just need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Amanda, seconded by Heidi. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. That's a record.
I've got three minutes again.